All right, hearing no other business, we'll be adjourned.
How wetlands are protected in new developments. Development completed before the 1980s typically did not have adequate wetland protection or address stormwater concerns. Today, these protections come in the form of wet ponds and occasionally grassed areas. You might wonder why newer developments have stormwater ponds with control structures. That's because in 1985, the state of Florida placed regulations on stormwater requiring these protective measures. Stormwater ponds collect and manage stormwater runoff by providing water quality treatment and restricting the water flow before it enters our creeks, rivers, wetlands, and the Gulf of Mexico. In undeveloped areas, stormwater runoff is filtered via overland flow through vegetation and wetlands prior to flowing into our water bodies. A wetland buffer is an upland area adjacent to wetlands consisting of existing vegetation and/or planted native species, which is to remain undisturbed. When engineered stormwater treatment systems are integrated into development plans, they effectively filter and treat runoff closer to its source before it enters a wetland or stream. The stormwater system provides water quality treatment in addition to that provided by the wetland. The purpose of state-required wetland buffers in residential, commercial, or industrial projects is to provide a visual and physical separation between development and wetlands. Protected wetlands and wetland buffers are often identified by signs, which serve as a reminder for people to stay out of these areas, effectively reducing pollution and habitat disturbance. You can often find signs in our county parks that include information about the ecological significance of wetlands, their role in flood control, and the species they support. For more information on how you can help protect wetlands in your neighborhood, go to mymanity.org/wetlands.
Welcome, everyone. It's been a beautiful day here in Manatee County. Welcome to the Tuesday, May 28, 2024, regularly scheduled board meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Normally this time I would bring, we would stand for the pledge and for invocation, but I'd like to take just a moment of chair privilege. And I'm not sure if everyone knew, last week, we had a deputy involved shooting. The deputy was shot by this criminal, but the deputy's at home resting now. But I'd like for you, if you would, when you're home later or whatever, please keep that deputy and his family in your prayers. And it goes to show you that those guys and ladies are out there every day on that wall, on that line, keeping, you know, the difference between us and chaos. So as you go out today and you see our sheriffs, our sheriff's deputies out there, tell them thank you, because they never know if they're coming back home, and this proved it last week. But we, you know, we back our blue, and in our sheriff's department's case, we back our green. So, but just keep him and his family and all of our law enforcement throughout Manatee County in your prayers. And that was it. But what I'd like to do now, as we do every meeting, we start by honoring God and pledging allegiance to our great nation. So if, please rise, and if Pastor Brock Patterson from Longboat Island Chapel would come forward and say the prayer, and then we have Chelsea Bush, a Manatee County 311 operator, is going to do our pledge for us this morning. Thank you.
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Gracious God, we give you, we give you great thanks for this day. Lord, we woke up this morning and we saw what you created, and indeed, it is beautiful. So we thank you, Lord, for allowing us the opportunity to be able to spend time together and, Lord, to do your work. Lord, ask your blessings, especially upon all of those, Lord, who give their lives so that we can be here. Plenty have already given and plenty more will give. We, Lord, we thank you for that sacrifice, and we give you praise, Lord, and thanks for all of our first responders, for the men and women, our police forces, our fire departments, our emergency personnel, our emergency personnel, Lord, they give of themselves so that we can be safe, so that we can live life. Thank you for what they offer. Thank you for the sacrifice that they make each and every day. Bless them and bless their families. And, Lord, now I ask your blessings upon all of the commissioners and the others who are decision-makers. Lord, I ask that you bless them, keep them, watch over them, provide them with your wisdom, watch over their families, their loved ones as well. Again, we give you thanks for this great day. It is in your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Chelsea. Chelsea's, just so everybody knows, Chelsea's going to take a few minutes. Her family is a Gold Star family, and they asked that they could take a few minutes just to talk about her brother. And it's, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you to the commission for letting me come up here, and thank you to everybody who took time out of their day to support me and my family. I am a veteran spouse, and while I am immensely proud of my husband's Air Force service, I'm standing before you today for another reason. My brother, PFC Austin Stump, was the epitome of Captain America. He knew from an incredibly early age that his sole purpose in life was to serve this country, and since we are firefighters' children, Austin had vowed to right the wrongs that occurred on September 11, 2001, killing 2,977 people, 343 of that number being firefighters. Austin graduated Manatee High School in 2017 and fought every obstacle imaginable for a year before finally swearing into the Army in 2018. He worked incredibly hard, joining the 75th Ranger Regiment after graduating basic training. He knew everything there was to know about the Army and the Rangers, which was both amazing and incredibly tiresome when he got going on a rant. He gained his paratrooper wings in 2019 and still managed to remain the most humble, down-to-earth person I have ever met. He was the kind of person who injured his knee going down a steep hill on a skateboard, proceeded to send the video to my mom and ask, well, did Dad laugh? And then would still carry his platoon member's lunch trays on the inevitable crutches that came afterwards. I promise you that I do not use the term "amazing" lightly. On August 25, 2019, Austin's life was taken from him before he had the chance to officially enter the Ranger School or complete his first deployment. He was not killed in a training accident, nor did he take his own life. It is our belief that PFC Austin Stump was killed in a hazing incident at the hands of his own platoon members. While he never got to see combat, his boots did, when my husband deployed to Jordan shortly after his death, taking his boots with him. Austin loved his family, his friends, and his country with a passion that was unheard of for a 20-year-old. He never got the chance to right the wrongs he set out to, tell us the stories of his deployment, or meet his niece, though I see him every day in her smile. Thank you for allowing me to tell Austin's story, for he will never truly be forgotten so long as we continue to speak his name.
Thank you, Chelsea. We are all heartbroken by your family's loss, and we thank you for your brother's service. We know that, and we thank your family for their service. We know your dad is a firefighter here in Manatee County, and your mom works here at Manatee County. So thank you so much for being here today, and thank you for remembering your brother, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Moving forward with, moving forward with the rest of the agenda. Can you minister, are there any announcements or changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, we have two. A public comment was received after the deadline, and Item 43 Budget Amendment Resolution B 24086 was amended to delete unnecessary attachments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any requests by commissioners to pull anything from consent, from the consent agenda? Thank you very much. We're going to, this time right now, we're going to adjourn the Board of County Commissioner meeting and start our Port Authority meeting. The members of the board up here sit as the Port Authority, and the chairman is Commissioner Van Austinbridge. So I will adjourn this meeting, and I'll hand the gavel over to him. We are adjourned.
Good morning, and welcome to the Manatee County Port Authority. Today's Tuesday, May 28, 2024, and call the meeting to order. We'll start with public comment. We usually start the Port Authority meetings with public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to address the Port Authority regarding any items on today's agenda for public comment on Port Authority business? All right, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment at this time. And we're actually going to the employee recognition last, and I'll skip the agenda around a little bit. We'll go to item number four, which is the consent agenda. We'll take care of business first, and then we'll get to the recognition, so we don't feel rushed in any way. Entertaining motions verbally on consent. Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz to approve the consent agenda. It's been seconded by Commissioner Turner. We've held public comment. All in favor of passing consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Madam Clerk, consent passes unanimously by a vote of five to zero, with Commissioner Bearden absent. All right, then we'll move to employee recognition. Michael Oramah will be recognized. Really incredible story, it'll be shared by our port director. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, it's truly an honor to be here today, to be able to present this recognition. I have Mr. Oramah's supervisor, David Sempier, here, and at that time also, Mr. Chairman, I would like you to come down also and personally hand him the award. So with that, I'll have David Sempier come up.
On the evening of April 6, 2024, while serving as a roving security officer, Officer Oramah was alerted at 10:30 to a severe forklift accident at one of the tenant warehouses. Upon his swift arrival at the scene, he encountered an individual suffering from a grave lower leg injury with significant bleeding. Demonstrating exceptional professionalism, Officer Oramah first ensured the safety of the scene and confirmed that emergency services had been notified. He then promptly retrieved his first aid kit and tourniquet. Recognizing the severity of the injury and the rapid blood loss, he effectively managed the situation by supplying the tourniquet and assisting in the application, effectively stemming the bleeding. Once the individual's condition was stabilized, Officer Oramah abruptly guided the Manatee County EMS vehicle from Northgate to the warehouse. EMS personnel acknowledged the effectiveness of Officer Oramah's initial response, left the tourniquet in place, and transported the individual to Brake Medical Center for advanced treatment. Michael's swift and decisive response played a pivotal role in not only preserving the life of the individual, but also preventing the amputation of the injured leg. Seaport and warehouse operations can pose significant risks, and thanks to Officer Oramah's immediate and decisive action, a life was saved that night. That individual continues to receive advanced medical treatment following this unfortunate accident. Officer Oramah's actions are a testament to the exceptional training, his commitment to safeguarding others, and adherents to the highest traditions and values at Seaport Manatee. His swift and decisive actions are highly commended and are in the utmost gratitude and respect. His exceptional performance under pressure serves as inspiration to us all.
Is Officer Oramah here?
He is.
All right, bring him down. We'd like to hear from him.
Good morning.
You, my friend.
Thank you, guys, for actually having me here. This is the first time I've been to a board meeting, so I'm just, I'm really glad that I was able to help the gentleman in this incident and be able to save his leg. He was pretty, he's pretty beat up, so.
How long have you been a security guard for us?
Just under a year.
Excellent. Are you a trained DMT?
No, sir. We did go through first aid and CPR training.
Okay, excellent. Wow. He's doing well, yeah, let's go down and have a photo real quick. All right. All right, always great to have a good news story. We appreciate that, Carlos. Executive Director comments?
No comments at this time, commissioners. Thank you.
All right. Board members, are there any commissioner comments before we adjourn?
No, sir.
All right, thank you so much. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
And we're back. Everybody loves banging another gavel. What do you like, what do we do right now? Not everybody, yeah, I'm sorry, woke up a future commissioner. What I do now is do our awards presentations and proclamations. We have, first off, we have an award this morning, we have an award this morning for the retirement award, which is kind of bittersweet, for James Scarborough. He's in transit. It's bittersweet because we're losing a great employee, and it's sweet because he's retiring. So, get to go out there and enjoy life. So, good morning. Who's coming up? Chad and the crew?
Good morning, board members. Kevin Hoyt, Public Works Transit Division Manager. So here, we're here to celebrate 28 years, eight months, and 26 days of James Scarborough. James is a transit attendant. He's a man of few words, very quiet, but he's got a tough job. He goes out battling the elements each and every day, picks up trash, puts in bus stop signs, fuels buses, benches, bus shelters. He does a lot. So I'm very proud to congratulate James for his dedicated service to beautiful Manatee County.
I'd like to add just a couple of things there for somebody that I don't have to even consider the work that the attendants are split up into, some of the ones that leave the yard, and the ones that stay in the yard and take care of the vehicles. James has loved to go out and dealing with the individual stops, so he would be the person you'd want to go have a beer with at some point in time and just ask that question and say, what's the 10 weirdest things you've ever found at a bus stop? Maybe not today, and, and...
Tell.
No, not today, but it would definitely have that. And that's where I'm saying, but it's also the thrill that I never even have to give that part of the service a thought. People like Jim just love to go out there. The only thing we had to reel him in on a little bit was too zesty trying to beat traffic to start early, but he needs to at least have somebody on the radio around that we knew that he was out on the road. But it gets a little busy trying to find a place to pull off a 41 and 301 sometimes to deal with the stops. But I like the idea of you have somebody that you never even have to give a thought to. They come to work, they do their job, and hardly ever hear a peep out of him, except for today, right? 10 minutes. James, we look forward to you having a very long and prosperous retirement, maybe even a day or two coming down here and heckling us, okay?
I just want to thank everybody at Transit, and I would like to tell the story about the guy who jumped in the back of my work truck unclothed. And I called 911, the sheriff's department come out, and they got him out of the back of the truck, because he was on drugs. But that's one of the psychmas of being out there early in the morning, you see all kinds of crazy things.
That's one.
Well, we'll hold off on the other list, but...
No, it's just great to go out in the mornings and, you know, being by yourself and working and not being bothered by anybody, and I'm just gonna miss it, but it's time to go.
Well, on behalf of Manatee County, here's your token. We'll get some fingerprints on it, and we'll clean it up, but hopefully that's what you ordered.
Yes. Spelled correctly.
Spelled correctly. Here you go, James. I'll give you a right handshake for the camera, but thank you. Congratulations. Many, many happy years of retirement. Happy, healthy years.
Well, James, thank you so much for spending 28 years of your life being here at Manatee County, and thanks for all the hard work that you've done. I mean, I know working with this crew, it's a tough job every day.
Yeah.
But I look forward to hearing some of your stories later on. Or maybe Chad could tell me some. But thank you very much, and we appreciate you, and have a great retirement. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
You've earned it. Thank you, sir. This is a first. Now we're going on to proclamations. This morning, we have a proclamation designated June 6, 2024, as Revive Awareness Day, and Commissioner Ballard, and I'm calling Baby Ballard, will be presenting this morning.
So as many people know, Manatee County suffered immensely with the opioid epidemic over the past 10 to 15 years, and the deaths and problems would have been even worse if it were not for opioid antagonists like naloxone. So with that, we'll have our proclamation. Whereas, Section 683.3342 Florida statutes authorizes the governor to issue an annual proclamation designating June 6, 2024, as Revive Awareness Day to champion the widespread availability of opioid antagonists. And whereas, Revive Awareness Day encourages community-based organizations to host events aimed at raising awareness regarding opioid overdoses and highlighting the accessibility and safe utilization of opioid antagonists to counteract the effects of opioids. And whereas, Manatee County had 136 reported fatal opioid overdoses in 2022 and in 2023. In a historic action, the United States Food and Drug Administration approved naloxone nasal spray as the first over-the-counter opioid antagonist. And whereas, in 2023, Manatee County community partners distributed over 4,500 doses of naloxone and trained over 23,000 individuals to administer the lifesaving medication. And whereas, Manatee County encourages residents to engage with community-based organizations to increase awareness regarding the hazards of opioids and the accessibility of naloxone as a mechanism for promptly reversing their effects. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that June 6, 2024, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Revive Awareness Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present in voting this 28th day of May, 2024, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida, and signed by our Chair, Mike Ron. All right, and we have Jeff Cordes to accept our award, or our proclamation. Thank you.
Good morning. Jeff Cordes, Health Information Services Manager with your Public Safety Department. I just want to say thank you so much for this proclamation. It's, we're surrounded by some community partners that are doing amazing work getting the information out there, reducing the stigma, and ensuring that this lifesaving medication is readily available in the community. I would like to introduce Andrew Conkle, your opioid response and policy coordinator. He's newer to the county, but you're going to see a lot more of him making recommendations with regards to some of the strategy here in the county. So I just wanted to give a quick introduction for Andrew and then all of our other community partners that are surrounding us today. So, thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you all so much.
Awesome. All right, now we'll move into the next section of the agenda where this is, oh, I'm sorry, may I make a motion to approve? Can I get a motion to approve? Can I get a second? All right, thank you. Thank you. Can I get a second? All right. Thank you. Motion approved by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Bearden. All those in favor? Thank you. Sorry, I didn't do that forward. I was talking to the Attorney. You got it up now? Oh, okay. It was moved by Turner and seconded by Bearden. Okay, whatever you guys want to do. That's all right. We'll keep it at that. The vote to adopt carries 6 to 0. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we'll move into Citizens Comment. This is for future agenda items only. This is for any item that is not on the agenda today. There will be a total of a 30-minute time limit on this, and you have three minutes. If you come up, please state your name and your county residence. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up and speak on a future agenda item? Yes, sir. Come up. Mr. Bearden, ma'am, you can be next. Yeah, nobody logged in.
Yeah, it was logged in.
I don't see any speakers, but sorry about that. I mean, we're having some, we are having some technical issues, but I'm not showing them on it. They're not logged in, but that's fine. Mr. Bearden?
Mike, Mike Meehan, Manatee County. Before I start, I'd just like to commend Carmine D'Amelio. I pick up trash on the causeway, and I've been doing it for eight years. I have over 800 hours of volunteer service picking up trash on the causeway, usually about once a week. Recently, there's an inter-local agreement that has shifted management of the appearance of the causeway to Manatee County, and I've interacted with Carmine on a number of occasions already. And his prompt responses have been very impressive, Mr. Bishop. Just wanted to mention that. Switching gears, I think everybody up here on the dais knows that Manatee County cut the funding for our daily bread last year. There's about $17,000 that was being contributed to daily bread by the county. That was cut. What you may not know is that our daily bread continues to provide services to Manatee County in the form of food boxes, to Manatee Children's Services, and also the Save Children Coalition. And it's about 15 boxes a month, roughly, that we package and distribute back to Manatee County, official Manatee County activities. So, we'd like the Commission to reconsider this decision. Last year, daily bread broke even because we didn't have any big repair expenses in Calendar 23. And in Calendar 24, it's a different story. We've had several expenses totaling about $40,000 in equipment repair and replacement that we didn't have last year. So now, we're in a little bit different position, and I guess we're asking the question, can we continue to provide Manatee County services when they've cut off some of the funding they've given to us? So I'd like to ask you to consider that. On the subject of the causeway, this is kind of a potpourri of comments. On the subject of the causeway, and in particular, the pollution in North Palm and Solon Bay, it's out of control. 75 is the danger rating. There have been many, many cases over the last 52 weeks where that range, that reading has gotten up to 300 or higher. And yet, there's no warning signs at all to the public about that, either on the north or the south side of the bay. So, I had an idea, and I'm gonna call it Mini the Mermaid. Put up a Mini the Mermaid sign, just like Smokey the Bear out west, to warn people of the pollution danger that exists in North Palm and Solon Bay. Finally, property taxes. You have a $491 million surplus first six months of the year. There's no way your budget is gonna be balanced in fiscal '24. You're gonna be way over. And so again, I'm promulgating the idea
Thank you, Mr. Bearden.
of a substantial property tax credit against '24 taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Bearden. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. If you could please state your name and county residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Ms. Richardson Judd. I'm a Manatee County resident since 2004. For those that can't do math, that's 21 years. Prior to that, Sarasota County. I have two requests. The first one is that this Commission declare a ban on burning immediately. We are in such a drought state, particularly out east, that it's becoming a little terrifying. Second issue. I live in the town of Duette, and I'm proud of it. Duette covers a 200-square-mile radius and generates property taxes to Manatee County for just over $280 million. Our community residents, our first responders, medical professionals, attorneys, educators, agriculture, ranchers, retirees, county employees, et cetera. We have migrant workers and their families that live here at various times of the year for weeks or months at a time. At April's meeting, the Deputy Administrator refused to let our Fire Chief Rocky Parker on the agenda and stated he could hang around and possibly get an opportunity to speak during public remarks. He went to the meeting and was accompanied by numerous chiefs within your fire district who support the issuance of an ALS in Duette. Instead, you chose to ignore and discuss a merger of fire districts, which should never have been entertained by nor has the authority of this board. Van Austin Bridge added insult to injury by stating, and I quote, "That because people choose to live out there, we should not expect to receive the services we might get if we were in the more densely populated areas of Manatee County." What about the thousands of people that travel through our town on State Road 62, Saffold Road, County Roads 37 and 39 on a daily basis? Are they not entitled to receive services? It's disturbing for me to know that we have six qualified and certified paramedics currently serving as volunteers who cannot perform ALS services to anyone because our fire and rescue does not, per this Board of Commissioners, meet their standards. How do we not meet your standards? I question, what is the current Board's definition of standards? Because you certainly are not educated regarding ordinance 17-041, as well as the state of Florida's requirements. Denial or ignorant disregard by this Board for the Duette Fire and Rescue application for ALS is in direct defiance of that ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am.
You should all be embarrassed.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Donna Sotero Kaiser. I attempted to file in, but it wouldn't accept my application because I pushed regular, and evidently, there were too many digits, which I didn't choose. I am also here to support Duette. I do have a lot of family and friends in Duette and rural areas. They pay their tax. You may not get as much tax from that area as you do in the over-congested, overbuilding downtown Bradenton area and outside on the waterfront, which baffles me. But I also have some health issues, and going out there, you know, I, an hour would make life decisions for me on my health issues. And going out there, knowing that I may not be able to get help for at least 30 minutes, is really disturbing to me. I think you guys have an obligation to give the same service to people in rural areas as you do in the overcongested areas of Bradenton and Sarasota areas. I think that they deserve it. They pay their tax. There's people, I pay my tax, and I go out in those areas. And if I don't make it to a hospital in an hour, I could be dead. My health issue is that serious. And I would want you to know that I think my family would take actions, but not against the county, although they could. But I would go after each and every one of you personally for your neglect of people because they live in a rural area. And that's just how I feel about things. And I thought you might want to know, that you might want to reconsider this situation, especially since these people are volunteering their own time. They're compassionate, and they're certified for what they do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir. Please state your name, county residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gil Rudeman. I've been a Manatee County resident for about 23 years. I submitted a request last, on the computer, to speak during this part. I don't know if the process went completely through. I want to speak in opposition to the new Veterans Park. Is that sound appropriate? Please tell me.
It's a future genotism. You can speak, sir.
Okay. I come here as an individual opposed to the park, and I would ask the Commission to be leery of those who say they represent organizations without legitimate proof of that organization's feelings. You've heard various reasons for why this park might not be in the best entrance. And I'm not gonna go into detail there. A few of them, just reason, cost, location. Others will speak in the future. I will just say that Manatee County Veterans Council, of which the Chairman is here, and I've been a Vice Chairman for years and involved heavily for about 18 years, was not consulted in this initiative, to the best of my knowledge. I don't know what veterans or veteran groups were ever solicited for information. If there is a committee on this, we ask that we be allowed to join. While watching the video of the February 13 session, a couple of things struck me as odd. The coolest thing about the new location is the meandering trail. I would hope that would not be the coolest thing out there. Talk about 30 monuments, but yet one is listed as an individual's name. I don't understand how those two items mesh. We requested $4 million for planning, and there was only limited resistance, for lack of better words, why we have to go for the full $4 million. Park like no other in the state, known throughout the state, I submit, I don't know why that is so important. For the record, as these recordings go, you had a member that day who wore a hat, and one of the male members said, "I like your hat." If you can't identify who you are, I don't think you should be making those comments. I would submit that I also heard on the recording, "Those who paid the ultimate sacrifice deserve our best." Sadly, I'm here to say that collectively, the Commission did not have, in my knowledge, any reps at the Manatee County Memorial Ceremony at Courtney Veterans Park yesterday. And I emphasize the word sadly. That completes my comments.
Thank you, sir. All right. Does anyone else like to come up for public comment? Say no, go ahead and close public comment. I have two Commissioners on the board. First is Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, or three Commissioners on the board. Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wrote a couple of things down I just wanted to touch on. Mr. Meehan, always enjoy hearing from him. Lives in the district. I like your idea for the causeway, and, but I would just point out that it's the Health Department that tests the water out there and determines whether or not it's safe or not safe to swim. So, we would want to steer our ideas towards them. Burning, somebody brought up burning, burn bans. So, the state also manages all the burns and burn permits in the county. It's the Department of Forestry. We don't have any control over that. I found that out the hard way in West Bradenton. And then lastly, ALS in Duette. So, my comments were accurate, and I stand behind them. And the reason we talked about consolidation that day is because Duette can achieve all of their goals by consolidating with Parish, which is right next door. Parish is ALS. And so if they were to consolidate with Parish, all the services that you desire, you would have. And there's a perfect model for that, and that's that Maiaaca merged with East Manatee for the exact same reason. They wanted to achieve the same goals that you wish to achieve, and they achieved them through consolidation of government rather than expansion of government. And that's what this Board supports, and that's what we encourage you all to do so that you can have all the services that you desire. That's all, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, I'm not entirely different than what Commissioner Van Austin Bridge just said. However, when this came up, look. The fire departments and fire districts are independent of us, just like the school district is. When this first came up, and I spoke to Rocky at length about this, I told the Ministers, just give him the certificate. I mean, it's, we're not supposed to oversee them. You're independent. The concern was, you're not gonna be voluntary if you have to cover that. And the implication was that there's most likely going to be a millage request associated with it. And I believe our staff came up with a better, more effective, more meaningful proposal by putting a flight car out there, which would have provided 24-hour care and coverage of accidents on 62 and 37th and all the roads out there. Like, ambulances don't work. Ambulances only park there, and that's their house in the middle of the night. When the population moves during the day, the ambulances move along with the population. You wouldn't have an ambulance out in Duette during the middle part of the day. So ALS serves a purpose. You can do some preliminary CPR and so forth, but a flight car would provide you better service at a cheaper cost because you wouldn't have the potential for a request for millage. That said, look, everyone's allowed to, you know, operate their own, operate their own district as they see fit. I didn't have a problem with the certificate. I think there's a better way. I wouldn't recommend it. I would prefer you not ask for the certificate because I think we can provide better service. I think this is short-sighted. I think this is going to be cost prohibitive to the people in Duette who are already paying taxes out there. But that said, I didn't care if you had it, but what's gonna happen is then you're gonna get a millage request on the ballot, and people are gonna have to vote on their safety because, as Donna said, people should have the same level of safety anyplace they go. And I made that argument when the conversation came up last time. But I made that argument in favor of somebody looking at the thought of some level of consolidation because it shouldn't be. Some of these fire districts have much better service. They have ALS. They have the ladder trucks. They've got the facilities. They've got the training facilities. And others do not. And I don't think that's fair to people in Duette who have less, you know, quote-unquote lesser service. And I don't mean that disparagingly to Rocky and everybody. I don't mean that disparagingly. I'm using it for lack of a better term. I think there should be a little bit more uniformity of service, much like we have with the MSO. So, I didn't care if you had the certificate. If the motion came up now, I would vote to help you and get you the certificate. I just think there's gonna be unintended consequences, and it's a little bit more short-sighted. And I think if people came to the table, we were offering, and we're still offering, a better option for the people in Duette. But I do think that some discussion of working with Parish makes logical sense. I said that before, and I'll say it again, and people have known that since they got on this board.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Ballard?
Just briefly to the last gentleman who spoke. I was there at the Memorial Day Service yesterday.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the gentlemen, thank you so much for coming up here and, you know, voicing your concerns. That being said, we are currently in the beginning stages. So, when you see the list of memorials, that's just, you know, just a kind of, a draft of what we believe. No individual's obviously gonna have their own memorial at this park, okay? This is going back to, all the way back to the Revolutionary War, and we're gonna hit every major conflict as time goes, and this is gonna be built out over several years. Now, the 22 acres off Buckeye, that's county-owned land. We don't own a lot of land, and knowing that where that location is at and the building that's going out there, we know that the park is going to be visited, and a lot of people are gonna know about it based on the actual location, coming off 275, 301, and so on, and all the development that's going out there. As far as the Advisory Board goes, we are currently getting that together as we speak. I have notified a lot of the veteran organizations, right, that I have been in contact with, that come up here and meet with me on a daily basis. I know that there are several other veteran organizations out there, and I'm trying to get them involved as much as possible and to notify each and every one of the organizations. Some, I've tried to reach out, couldn't get ahold of anybody, but I have brought it to the American Legion. I've brought it to the DAVs, SRQ vets, Minnesota veterans. They all know about this. So, we're doing our best to go out and really notice the public in regard to that. Now, we just, this thing is moving quite nicely, and yeah, we just got approved roughly 3 million. County Administrator, would you like to explain that?
Well, we're in the process through the Appropriations Committee with Vern Buchanan, who has initiated
who has initiated the first $3 million towards us. It hasn't been finalized yet correctly. Andy, you don't see anything?
Yes, sir. Thanks for the opportunity. So, Congressman Buchanan's office let us know that several projects that we had asked to be earmarked for FY '25 were in the approval process. So, the Veterans Resource Center Connections Hub were envisioning, again, as Commissioner Bearden pointed out, it's, we're still in the evolving process of what everything's going to look like, but some initial funding to flesh that out. It's not done yet, but it's in the pipeline. It made the first round of, in the approval process.
And with that 3 million and the 4 million, the Board's already committed. That's a total of 7 million towards this project.
Thank you so much. And also with the 22 acres. So, we've already have 7 million committed with 22 acres here in Manatee County. Why is the Veterans Resource Center so important? I could tell you that we're dealing with 22 suicides a day across the nation, and the majority of those, a lot of those individuals are my generation of veterans that are coming up. And so, I have it really hard to really focus on that and really give the resources that veterans need because I can tell you from personal experience, I had a lot of trouble in the last few years. And so, we're just trying to really focus on our veterans here in Manatee County and make something that no other county has in the state of Florida. So, I appreciate your time, and I will be reaching out to you, to your organization, to give you guys a seat at the table.
No, sir. You can meet with Commissioner Bearden after the meeting, or you can reach out to his office. Thank you, Commissioner Bearden. All right, at this point, there are no other Commissioners on the board, so I'll go ahead and close public comment on future agenda. We opened up public citizen comment for items on consent. Is there anyone that would like to come and speak on the consent agenda items that are being presented in consent today? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close citizen comment on consent. And look for a motion. Ma'am, did you want to speak on something on consent?
No, mine is after consent.
Okay. All right, thank you, ma'am. I'll go ahead and look for an approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent. A motion by Commissioner Turner, a second by Commissioner Ballard. If you cast your votes at this time. If you'll cast your votes at this time on consent. Thank you. And the motion carries 6 to 0. Thank you very much. Now, what we're going to do is we're going to move into the regular part of our meeting, and we have, let me get back to the agenda. Okay. So, now we're going to move into the advertised public hearings, presentations upon request. Is there anyone like to pull any of the items or any presentations upon request? I'll go ahead and read Financial Management into the record. Adoption of a resolution R. 24088 regarding infrastructure tax to add three projects to the Parks and Community Facilities category, two projects to Transportation category, two projects to Public Safety and Law Enforcement category, and adoption of a budget amendment resolution. Can I get a motion on that? Motion's coming up. All right. Motion's been moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. If you cast your votes at this time. And the motion carries 6 to 0. Item number 41, adoption of ordinance 2433 amending 22-22-8 of the Manatee County Code an existing speed limit zone for Range One Park from Lakewood Ranch Boulevard to Bournside Road, to Bournside and, to Bournside and Uline Road from SR 64 to SR 70. Motion's been made by Commissioner Bearden, seconded by Commissioner Turner. If you cast your votes at this time. Oh, I'm sorry.
And I had a comment, too.
You did? On this item or one before?
This one. It's presentation upon request. I don't need a full presentation. I talked about it at my briefing. I don't want to waste people's time with the, but I do want to make a comment about it.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of this. I mean, I know we keep trying to increase speed limits all over the place, but this one seemed a little pointless and short-sighted at this point. If you look at that stretch, and I drive on this for multiple times a week. My daughter plays a lot of games out at Premier. This stretch goes in front of Premier, where we have tons of soccer tournaments, kids running across the street. There's not enough parking there right now, so people are parked on both sides of the road. You've got a high school getting built right there, a library right there. We're building an aquatic center right there. Why are we increasing the speed? I know it's 5 miles an hour, but I've never once driven on that road and said, "Man, I'm never going to get there because it's 35 and not 40." It was a non-issue. And I've never once heard any of my friends going out to soccer or anyplace else complain about the speed limit on that road. It seems like we're increasing speed just to increase speed in a situation where we should be keeping the speed lower. We just passed cameras for school zones because we're trying to protect kids, but now we're going to increase the speed limit in front of libraries and aquatic centers and high schools and soccer fields. It seems pointless to me. I don't get it. And I've heard that we've had problems at Bournside and other roads of race, of kids racing cars and stuff. We're just encouraging more speed. I mean, people are going to drive what they're going to drive regardless of what a little sign says, but there's no reason to encourage it. If they're going to drive 5 miles over, 10 miles over 35, they're just going to go that same distance over at 40 now, just making the speed that much faster. It's a straight road, so it's already dangerous because there's no traffic coming on it. I don't know why we're doing this.
Thank you, sir. Madam Attorney. Yeah, I know. I'm sorry. Okay. Is there any public comment on item 40, under Financial Management? Saying no, closed public comment. Already voted. Now, item 41, is there any public comment regarding item 41? Saying no, closed public comment. If you want to cast your votes now. And the motion carries 5 to 1 with Commissioner Cruz voting no. All right, thank you. Moving on to our next item. This is advertised public hearing, presentation scheduled. Community and Veteran Services, who's here to present?
Good morning, County Commissioners, Mr. Bishop, Ms. Douglas Tina. My name is Julia Viera. I'm the Community Development Project Manager. We are here today as the final step to update our analysis of impediments to fair housing. I'm going to pass it along to our consultant, Amanda Warner with Wade Trim for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Julia. Good morning, everyone. As Julia mentioned, my name is Amanda Warner. I'm a planner with Wade Trim. We're a consultant working for you on the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Report. So, we are in the process of updating a document. This is a document that the county maintains in support of its federally funded grant programs. The Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Report supports the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships Program, and the Emergency Solutions Grant. These are all HUD-funded grant programs. So, this document fulfills HUD's Directive to affirmatively further fair housing, and it supports equal housing opportunity. It documents efforts to eliminate racial and ethnic segregation, physical and other barriers to persons with disabilities and other discriminatory practices in housing. And it's typically updated every five years. So, we have been working on this document since early 2024. We held a public hearing and several focus group meetings. One was a grant workshop in conjunction with the Community Development Block Grant, Grant Application Period. And then, we held a meeting with the Manatee County Housing Authority and also a meeting with the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Once we had a draft document together, we published that document for a 30-day public comment period. And then, today, we are presenting the results of all of those public involvement efforts and the draft report. One requirement by HUD is that we submit this document before August 16th, 2024. So, that's the date we're working toward this year. So, what is fair housing? So, fair housing is the equal opportunity to choose where you live if you can pay the rent or mortgage without being discriminated against or treated differently than other people. You also may see on many documents related to these programs the equal housing opportunity symbol, and this is a symbol that represents the commitment to equal housing opportunity under these programs. So, all of this is in support of the Fair Housing Act. It's part of the Civil Rights Act, and housing discrimination is illegal under the Fair Housing Act. Fair housing is not optional. It promotes integrated communities, and it seeks to prevent prejudice. So, under the Fair Housing Act, the following classes are protected: race or color, religion, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, national origin, familial status, and disability. So, those are the protected classes that we're talking about under the Fair Housing Act. And these are just some examples of the most common types of housing discrimination. So, for example, refusing to rent, sell, or negotiate a mortgage or insurance based on one of those protected classes, refusing to make available or falsely denying that housing is available, imposing different prices, terms, conditions, or privileges, using different qualification criteria or standards, assigning a particular class to a particular building or neighborhood. This is also commonly referred to as steering, threatening, coercing, intimidating, or retaliating, making discriminatory advertising or denying reasonable accommodations. So, those are some of the most common types of housing discrimination. So, today, we're talking about impediments to fair housing choice. What are those? Those are really conditions that restrict fair housing choice or access to opportunity. These are things like ongoing local or regional segregation or lack of integration, racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. HUD refers to those as RECAPs, so you may hear me use that term in a little bit. Significant disparities in access to opportunity, disproportionate housing needs, and evidence of discrimination or violation of civil rights laws or regulations related to housing. And then, a fair housing contributing factor is any factor that essentially causes a fair housing issue. So, racially, ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, these are HUD-designated areas. So, we didn't come up with these boundaries. These are ones that are published by HUD. And you'll see on the map, there are several within Manatee County, and those are outlined in red. And those are areas where concentrations of racial or ethnic minorities overlap with high percentages of poverty. And so, that's what we're talking about when we refer to racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. The threshold for this is over 50% minority population and over 40% poverty population. So, the conclusion of our efforts to collect public input regarding affordable, excuse me, regarding fair housing choice and barriers to fair housing produced six recommendations. So, I'm going to talk about these, actually, six impediments, excuse me, and then corresponding recommendations. So, number one was the lack of fair housing education, awareness, and information for both landlords and tenants. We heard about this at all of our public input opportunities. So, there just was a sense that there wasn't enough education out, both for persons that are living in housing as well as the landlords that are renting that housing. So, our action that we're proposing is to expand fair housing education within Manatee County. This includes three recommendations, supporting facilitation of fair housing education seminars, continuing to coordinate with the Manatee County Housing Authority, and continuing to disseminate fair housing information during Fair Housing Month. The second impediment that was identified was the limited availability of affordable housing for protected classes. This action is to increase the availability of affordable housing in Manatee County. We know that this is an objective of the county in general. It's continuing to work with municipalities and private and nonprofit housing developers and service providers to develop new affordable housing and a variety of unit types and sizes compliant with ADA standards. Our other recommendation for this impediment is to develop a program to incentivize inspection and repair of existing substandard units so that they can be added towards the housing supply. The third impediment is that racial and ethnic minorities continue to be concentrated geographically within the county. This was identified in the last assessment of fair housing. So, the action is to identify opportunities to reinvest in RECAPs to eliminate blighted conditions and spur development. So, continued reinvestment, working with municipalities and private and non-private housing developers to prevent steering and promote fair housing choice and further distribute affordable housing equitably. And then, we're going to talk about Recommendation 3 in a moment under impediment number four. So, impediment number four was the lack of code enforcement on substandard rental units. Again, this is something that was continued from the last assessment of fair housing. Our proposed action is to strengthen code enforcement on substandard rental units, developing a program to incentivize the inspection and repair of existing substandard units so that landlords are encouraged to make the repairs toward compliance, and those units can contribute to the affordable housing inventory. The second recommendation under this impediment is to continue to support and prioritize applications for projects that provide ADA accessibility improvements. So, whether part of a public facilities, infrastructure improvements, housing rehabilitation, or new construction, this will go towards helping persons with disabilities in the community gain accessibility. The fifth impediment was a lack of local contact for fair housing complaints and guidance. In all our discussions at the focus groups in the public hearing we held at the Grant Application Workshop, we heard that there really was an unclear direction of who you should contact if you have a fair housing concern and how to make the connection between reporting that fair housing concern and working with HUD to resolve it. So, our proposed action is to improve the enforcement of fair housing laws and ordinances. So, continuing to coordinate with Manatee County Sheriff's Department and Manatee County 311 to provide fair housing enforcement resources, and then, to establish a local fair housing liaison or ombudsman as a new position or role to serve as a navigator to those seeking fair housing guidance. This would facilitate the reporting of complaints to HUD and to organize regular fair housing seminars and workshops within the community. And then, finally, the sixth impediment that was identified was continued complaint activity in recent years. So, fair housing complaints are inventoried and reported. HUD keeps track of those. And so, our proposed action is to focus fair housing efforts where complaint activity has increased. So, the recommend, first recommendation under this is to work with landlords and tenants to address the most commonly occurring basis of complaints, which in Manatee County is disability and race. So, those were the most common of fair housing complaints that were reported. And then, focus on fair housing education, which was addressed under previous impediments and recommendations in this presentation. And then, the second recommendation is to develop and implement a competitive funding allocation process, including fair housing-related criteria for sub-receipients of the county's federally funded grant programs. So, every year, when applicants apply for these federally funded grants, there's some kind of nexus between their commitment to fair housing and their ability to receive the grant. And with that, today, we're requesting the following actions from you. One is, this is a public hearing, so giving the opportunity for both residents and you as the Board of County Commissioners to provide comments and for us to answer questions regarding the AI report. And then, the other request is to adopt this report and authorize its submission to HUD, including the execution of any documents necessary to implement the report and any certifications that are required by HUD to do that. And with that, Julia and I are available to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for any of the Commissioners? She's right back there.
I've already, I've already put in my vote.
Any questions for any of the Commissioners? Okay, all right, thank you. At this time, thank you very much. At this time, I'll open up for public comment. Is there any public comment regarding item 42? Saying no, I'll go ahead and close public comment. There's been a motion made by Commissioner Cruz and seconded by Commissioner Ballard. If all those would cast your votes now. Cast our votes. Everybody waiting for you to flip it. Yeah, Commissioner Bearden stepped out. All right. He did abstain. He just was absent. So, the motion carries 5 to 0 with Commissioner Bearden being absent. All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to a regular scheduled Financial Management. You are up. We need him out here. Can you get him? We don't need him. Andy, you can do that. Andy, you can do that. Yeah, Andy, go get, bring him back in here, thank you. Need a Pauls or a eucalyptus or something down there?
There's all that screaming.
Yeah, kickball. Let's not talk about that.
Good morning, commissioners.
Thank, good morning.
Good morning. County Administrator, Commissioners, County Attorney. Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
This item is looking to adopt Budget Amendment Resolution B-24086, which is seeking to increase the budget of the Supervisor of Elections by $841,340. And with that, we had asked the Supervisor of Elections, Mr. James Satcher, to come and speak on behalf of his budget. And, you know, he's CFO, Chief of Staff, correct? Chief of Staff, David Ballard. Thank you.
What do Mr. Supervisor?
Good morning, great to see everyone. Thank you, Mr. Administrator, Madam County Attorney, Mr. Chair, and Commissioners. So, come before you today, obviously, we are staring at what many are characterizing as the most important election of our lifetimes. And so, taking a look at that and obviously having assessed things down the road, just south of us, at the Supervisor of Elections Office. This budget amendment that we're proposing today, it transfers $841,340 from reserves in the general fund to the Supervisor of Elections Fund for enhanced and expanded levels of service within the SOE office for the, this fiscal year. This budget amendment will allow the Supervisor of Elections to expand safety and security measures to ensure public confidence in the 2024 presidential election. Hardware and software upgrades are required to perform a complete and full audit of certified election results. Current audit procedures require the statutory minimum of 1% of precincts in one race. With this, physical and digital security improvements will also be added. We'll be able to audit 100% of the races. To enhance and expect, we'll also be enhancing and expanding the accessibility of voter service. The Supervisor of Elections will add an eighth early voting location, open two satellite offices, one in Lakewood Ranch and one in the North River Parish area. As the population center trends eastward, it's essential to offer voter services to voters where they live. Satellite offices will require increased operational and personnel costs. This budget also allocates. In order to create a zero-based budget and maintain current levels of service, $234,000 roughly is budgeted for overruns based on past budget years, current budget projections, and the cost associated with having a new supervisor assume office. As far as, you know, just general overview, we are currently by far the lowest-cost Supervisor of Elections in the state of Florida with any type of similar person, population, by far. And with passing this today, we will still be the cheapest per vote. So, obviously, when, I went over there and was absolutely honored to get that appointment and to be there. Great people. One of the biggest strengths that I've found is a lot of institutional knowledge and great people that work hard every single day. But, we still have opportunities. There are major things as far as technology that have not been adopted that could and should be. All neighboring counties are using this audit software, so it should be a big improvement. And so, with that, I'm open to any questions. And we also have, you know, we have our Chief of Staff here that can speak to any of the details on the budget if, if we get into the weeds. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz is up on the board.
Yeah, my, my, my first concern when this came through, honestly, was timing. I understand you just got there, so I can appreciate that. You couldn't have done anything. It's not like you could have asked for it last year or something. I mean, you know, I'd give you the benefit of the doubt on that. But, we're, what, six weeks away from mail-in ballots going out? About that amount, when votes start coming back in, eight weeks away from early voting. I mean, we, you got a lot on your plate. And anybody who took that role would have a lot on their plate. If I took that role, I'd be overwhelmed right now trying to figure out this entire position in this abbreviated period of time, which is just an unfortunate timeline in terms of how this was structured. So, is this really the best use? And I'm asking, because you did, for full disclosure, you did call me on Sunday to have a conversation. Then, I tried to reach back out to you yesterday, but obviously, with the holidays, that just didn't work. But, I did appreciate the, the opportunity to try to speak. Is this the best use of your time and your Chief of Staff's time, considering the, the level of, of just education and preparation? I mean, you get to a point where it's great improving things, but at some point, you have to stop improving and start performing. And we're at a point where you really need to start making sure the ballots are going out, making sure the machines are calibrated, making sure the poll workers are, is this best use of time? This, this may be a good idea. Sarasota has three different Supervisor of Elections offices. They have one in Venice, they have one in Northport, and then, they have that, their primary one. We have one. So, maybe that's not a terrible idea, but we haven't, we're not given a whole lot of information. In fact, I just tried to pull up the information you sent, and apparently, one of the updates, this agenda, was removing all of the information from the agenda. So, I'm, I'm kind of going on the fly here because I expected to have some of those documents in front of me. But, you, you, there's a lot of talk about this, the software. But again, I don't have it in front of me anymore because it was removed. But, the software only accounted for about $40,000 to $50,000. Correct me if I'm wrong, because you have it in front of you. About $40,000 to $50,000 of the $840,000 request, correct?
No, sir. Sorry, I'm sorry, I don't have the documents in front of you, but that is not the correct number.
What, what amount of it was the software?
I do know that between the software and budget overruns that we expect, just looking at last year's budget, how much they overran in different areas?
No, I don't mean the whole budget. I know the whole budget was $841,000. I meant the software part. There's 277, I'm going off the top of my head. 277,000 of it was salary, and then, there was?
Nope, no, 277. That probably is the audit number that you're thinking of because it's right around 300,000.
I really wish we wouldn't have randomly removed all the documents off of the agenda when we're going to be discussing this. So, how do you, let me go back to the other question. Do you feel that you're going to be in a position to implement this? Have you, have you sourced the location for the two new Supervisor of Elections offices? The new early voting location, are they sourced? Are they staffed? Are they prepared at this point? I mean, are, are we going to still be staffing offices while we're actively conducting a primary coming up? Because you've got that interim. I understand your focus is, and your conversation was the, the presidential election, which technically falls under a different budget period, which you'll be coming back to us in a few weeks. Do you believe we're going to be fully prepared and have those operational, and it's not going to cause any disruption in your office during this period of time?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Yeah, I under, I understand what you're saying and how you feel on that. It's definitely a lot to digest and a lot of things that we need to do moving forward. However, you know, and, and I mean, I felt the same way, but I will not say that I've felt overwhelmed. We've got great people. And so, what we're doing, you know, I've found that each person at the office has a lot of ability in their individual areas. And so, I do believe we can walk and chew gum at the same time. In this instance, we can get more than one thing accomplished. All of our constitutional officers are having to do that. So, it's not new or overwhelming in this case to get that done. I do believe we'll be able to implement those things. I do have locations that I am in beyond preliminary talks, but not in final talks for each of those in each area. Obviously, I don't want to sit down and be too, you know, talking numbers with people until we have this vote. So, so there have been steps that I haven't taken, but there is something that we think will be a great fit in the Lakewood Ranch area and, and also in the parish area. So, I do think we'll be able to do that. We were able to meet the vendor and see the equipment at an SOE meeting that we had just last week. And so, I'm familiar with it. Should be an easy process for my employees. These things are all that I'm going to be adding. For me, I'm getting, you know, obviously accustomed to what they already know, plus what I'm adding. But, no, I think that it's important enough to where we should move forward with these things. Obviously, I wouldn't have brought it forward anyway. And to your point, you know, with the primary coming up and those things, obviously, the, there's an argument to be made that I'd be better off if I were not here today because it does open me up to some criticism. However, at the end of the day, and after November, I want to be able to look every single citizen of Manatee County in the eye and say, "We did everything we could to be sure this election was secure, that we maintained voter integrity, and that we kept." Obviously, we keep an eye on their money, but I don't know that there's too many things that are more important. So, I, I do think it's the right decision. I wouldn't be here otherwise.
Okay, and I don't disagree with that. So, now, you've been there for, what, two months, give or take? So, you've had time to assess what went right, what went wrong previously with the Supervisor of Elections. So, you, you're saying you're trying to protect the integrity of elections. What, what's gone wrong in the past that requires a correction at this point? Because again, once, once November's over, the Supervisor of Elections is going to have 18 months before another election. 18 months to, to find new office space, come to us with detailed real information about what you're planning to do, sit down, have, like, we've already had long memos and details from the clerk of the court for her upcoming budget. We've already all had briefings and sat down with the sheriff for upcoming budget. Like, there's details for these. This is a kind of quick fly-by-night, like, hey, I need a quick budget increase right now. So, it would seem to imply, because we can't wait till Nov, we can't wait till June to implement a budget that starts in October, that there was a, a reason for it. So, what's, what are we protecting? What, what, you know, what's the, what's, what's the problem that we're looking for a solution for here? What's, what's wrong with the election process to date that requires? I mean, because again, your request is for an increase of 26.6% over last year, and it's only for four months. Like, this isn't 26% on an annual basis, this is for four months. If I would have add your request to the actual increase from last year, and if this all would have been with the Supervisor of Elections, that would have, you know, equated to 38% increase from the '23 budget to the '24 budget. So, what's, what, what's the problem? What did you uncover in these past two months that require this to be such an immediate action?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I think one thing to point out, and so me and you have had, you know, discussions when I was in that seat before, where there may not necessarily be a lack of understanding, there could just be a disagreement, you know? So, but as far as the genuine understanding what we're doing, I've got budget overruns from last year that I'm addressing. For the most part, though, sir, I'll just be honest with you. It's not my style to see a problem behind the scenes that I know and grasp right away when I see it and then come here on television in front of everyone and air those things, especially when mostly what we're talking about is security. So, I'm not going to, on, you know, something that's going to be memorialized, say, "Security concerns I have for the office." So, I guess there is some level of, you know, trust that I'm asking for. However, if we don't have that level of trust and, and we're not able to come to an agreement, I'm okay with that. I, I, you know, I'm accustomed to that, that is okay. And, but looking at it, like I said, I would think that we should understand, everyone watching, though, might want to think about the fact that from just a self, if I were just purely thinking of myself, it would be an easier road to just let everything go exactly the way it's gone in the past, not make any improvements between now and next fiscal year. Seeing the situation, I didn't see, feel comfortable with that. Just as, I, I think I could say, as perhaps I could find an overall illustration that might make it clear, though, is that since my time in the office, I have ordered the temporary, you know, glass, the Plexiglas left over from COVID, taken down from when you come in to register as a candidate at the SOE or if you have questions about your registration. So, that's without getting into any specifics. It's just to say that I do feel like there are things that have been undone that are important, and we're moving on each one of those. And I, I think it's the right decision. I think I'll leave it at that for now, although I'm still, I'm still filled in questions.
That's fine, I can appreciate that. But, you said trust, and it, there's a saying, "Trust but verify." So, that's what we're trying to have this conversation. Because I, I pulled, I don't know if, I'm guessing you saw it. Florida Department of State puts out a report every year or at the end of every election cycle. It's the Officer of Election Crimes and Security Report. They send it to the legislature. They put that together in January 2024. This one went from 2020 to current, so it was two entire election cycles. Manatee County collectively had seven different elections, if, if you include the, the school millage. During that window of time, there was 1,339 complaints for Supervisor of Elections in the state of Florida. That would average 20 complaints per county. What, 67,000? Manatee County during that window of time had 12, which was less than the average. And if you want to go based on size, Manatee County represents, represented just over 2% of the total registered voters in the state, but had less than 0.9% of the complaints. We're disproportionately better than anybody else in the state in terms of our elections. We have the least number of complaints. 12 over seven different elections. That's less than two per election. So, my question is, that's the facts, that's the verify part, that, yes, we're the cheapest, but that's awesome. We're supposed to be, we're supposed to be using taxpayer dollars to the best of our ability. If we're the cheapest and the best, man, people will take that all day long. So, that, that's my problem, is we don't seem to have a problem at this point in time. Could it be better? Sure. But, does it need to be better today because there's an inherent problem? A break in our system? Did we have 100 different complaints? I mean, the villages alone had six. They're a city. And that was in one election. We had 12 across seven elections. So, I mean, I just want to make sure, because we don't have information, and that's the problem. In fact, I have less information now than I did. And the clerk, and, and I'll bring this up, and then, I'll, I'll let it go, but this is important because it's the mindset of the board. It's the mindset of this board that's about to vote on this. And they're all, I know, we all know what the vote's going to be. But, last year, the clerk, who had seven years of experience, versus your seven weeks of experience, came to us for a 7% increase for the whole year. 7% for the whole year, $677,000 for the whole year. You're asking for $841,000 for the next couple of months. We pushed back. She wanted four, four employees. After seven years of experience, know what she wanted. And at one point, this board gave her zero, and I had to pull it to get her two. And on July 23rd, we were talking about the budget to set the temporary millage. We made her come across the street and spend over an hour, standing where you're standing right now, detailed, going through every last little job description of the people that they want, before this board was okay giving her two people totaling less than $200,000. And Chairman Mike Ron, then Commissioner Mike Rom, stated that the clerk owed us an explanation, a detailed explanation of exactly what positions that, that she wanted before we would be willing to fund those. Commissioner Bearden speak, and covering it by saying he wasn't trying to attack the clerk. This was a universal belief he has, and he believes everyone should be held to the standard, said, quote, "He wanted analytics before he'd be willing to use anything because he needs to be a good steward of taxpayer dollars." He wanted detailed analytics from a clerk with seven years' experience for two people. And the final comment, before we let the clerk go back to doing her job, was from then-Commissioner James Satcher, who flat-out refused to give any new positions to the clerk, saying that she had to make do with what she had. That was on July 23rd. It's on video, you can go watch it. I, I watched the, the YouTube video to make sure I, I recalled everyone's comments. But, the comments at that point in time from this board were, yes, we give a lot of flexibility to the constitutional officers. They're independent, but we still require some level of oversight and analytics from, from the, the constitutional officers because we're, at the end of the day, the stewards of taxpayers. And we've run people through the wringer over these things. Here, I don't even have the document showing the summary of your budget because it's been removed from my agenda at this point in time. We're being asked to increase the budget by 26% for a stub period of time, whereas we wouldn't let the clerk have a 7% increase over the course of an entire year. I think if we're going to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, I think we need more information on exactly what you're asking for. I'm not fundamentally against it, but I don't see a problem with it. Nobody's presented me a problem with it. No one said, "Here's all the people who were unable to vote in early voting because we didn't have enough early voting sites." No one's told me, "Here's all the people who've been unable to register to vote because there isn't a second SOE office," even though probably 95% of people do it all online now. I don't have any of that information. And this board, people sitting on this board who are voting, who probably already clicked the yes on their voting client, have flat-out said they would not vote for the clerks without detailed analytics, and we do not have detailed analytics. I appreciate what you're trying to do. I hope you're going to make our elections much safer, much more secure. I'm not against it. I just think this is premature to do it during this window of time and do it outside of a budget period, just to say, "Hey, look, we're doing something." We don't need to just do something. When something's not broken, you don't need to fix it. Let's get through this election cycle and then have a meaningful conversation about the future of our supervisor elections office. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. And thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think maybe we should just take a look as far as what we're looking at with neighboring counties. And maybe that'll help us get to a spot where we have a little more of an overall picture. So if you look at Sarasota, their budget coming into this year, seeing three elections. So you had the presidential preference, you have the August primary, and then you do have the November presidential election, obviously, a large capital expenditure coming up. That is not technically in this budget year, but the outlays begin before. So if you take a look at that, they asked for $9 million for their budget, nine. We have roughly, we've said many times, that we have roughly the same population. They had nine, and then as things progressed and as their year went on, they found themselves needing a $1 million budget amendment, so their budget went to 10. I did almost, and we talked it over behind the scenes, I almost came with a pizza labeled Sarasota and one labeled Manatee County, and there'd be 10 pieces, you know, in Sarasota and three in Manatee County. But, you know, didn't want to seem like I was making light of the situation. But nevertheless, that is the situation we find ourselves in. And it is, in general, this county has taken... This is a different philosophy. I'm not going to apologize for the fact that I bring a different philosophy to the table. The old regime, their main focus was vote by mail. And that is definitely, without question, the cheapest way to log votes, vote by mail. It's also unsecured, unsupervised, not unsecured, wrong word, unsupervised. Arguably, there are many that argue that it's the least secure. I am not, you know, making any major changes along those lines. We're still going to offer vote by mail. I'm glad that we have a great department doing that. However, my plan is also to make it easier and more convenient to vote in person so that we have that supervision of each vote. People have to show up, they have to show their ID, and I think that that's reasonable in the United States of America. You have to show a picture ID to walk into Costco. So I don't think we're going to be asking too much to encourage people, at least, to vote in person. That will cost extra money, so that's one of the things we're talking about. And obviously, the equipment we've spoken of with clear audit. There's also a cyber side of things that we're adding, a network or another company that we're bringing in to audit our cybersecurity, make sure we're safe on that. You know, there have been threats in Florida, two counties, that none of us know the details of. Governor DeSantis knows, and the president knows. They had briefings that are not privy to any of us about foreign agents trying to break into Florida election systems. So at the end of the day, if I have to speak with someone, I want to be able to say I did everything I could. I hope that that's the intent of the board here today as well. But like I say, you've got to make your vote, you've got to make your decisions. I'm okay with either one. In fact, well, I'll leave it with that today. And once again, I do understand the criticism as far as there's not a ton of detail, which I have it, more detail that we'll be leaving with the clerk, and we have the overhead, if you want it, that goes into some of the more specifics. But a huge portion of this really does involve security things. So I don't want to go and list the different security concerns I had walking in the office, but they are real. And when we speak about the other constitutional officers, by the way, they're all roughly, you know, $6 million budget. And I stand before you today with the three and asking for it to be four as we come before a huge and important election. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. We have a lot of people on the board, so I appreciate your comments. I'm on the board. Real quick, how old is the technology you have in the office right now? Is it 20 years old? Is it five years or whatever? And also, does the technology you have also remove duplicates from the voter rolls or people that are dead? Or anything like that from the voter rolls, the technology that you got, that you're operating off of? Because part of your, I'm assuming part of the biggest cost is technology that you are looking to upgrade. And would help with that potentially, I don't know, you know, how old is the technology you guys? Are we talking about Big Blue? Are we talking about, you know, I mean...
That's a blast from the past, Mr. Chair. So the way the supervisors of elections work, for the most part, you do have vendors that are taking care of, you know, each individual thing. So you're almost like a general contractor building, a commercial building. You're bringing in people to do the sheetrock. So probably the most important vendor that we use would be ESNS. So they're going to be all of our voting equipment. When you show up at the polling place, you vote, you stick it through the tabulator. I will say that, and speaking to some of what's been said earlier as far as do we want to train on all new equipment in multiple areas? ESNS, the equipment we're using from them currently is nine years old. It'll be 10 years old next year. They have new equipment that, you know, that most counties, that counties are using at this point. Obviously, we'll make the transition to that next year, most likely. It is tough for us also as those different equipment, in the last, in the presidential preference primary, four of those machines were down, non-operational, which left us with, which I was not at the office at this time. So this is anecdotally what I've been told. We had just enough machines to have the right amount at every location, but if any machine had gone down, we did not have any replacements. And so the plan was and is to have 10 machines set aside to fill in any gaps if anything goes down on that. So we'll be renting those machines. We'll be renting those because to buy nine-year-old machines would not make any sense. So we'll rent those. The workers are trained on that equipment currently. Then we'll be looking to upgrade to newer technology in that area moving forward.
Thank you for that. How many voting residents are there in Manatee County right now? Total, Republican, Democrat, Independent, Green Party, whatever that's out there?
Roughly a quarter million. And we do have, you know, we mentioned as far as no one's having any trouble registering to vote. I don't want to... People can get registered in Manatee County. We've done a good job of that. But I will point out that the difference in population between us and Sarasota and the difference in registered voters is greater. Perhaps there's other underlying reasons for that. Haven't gotten too into the weeds on it, but it is something that I'm taking a look at as we move forward.
Okay. And some of this you said was financial. What's your number of staff in your office right now?
Best count, okay. So we're at 17, 17 staff. Once again, by way of comparisons, Sarasota's at 37.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, Supervisor, it's always a pleasure having you up here on that side. And it's always a pleasure having you on this side. That being said, we realize that the last supervisor of election was very heavy on mail-in ballots, which we know is not secure. And the ideology of this county, obviously, was handpicked by the governor, James Satcher, who has more integrity than anybody I know. The guy has more integrity than anybody I know that I've met within the last 10 years, right? He's a constitutional conservative that's out here to protect our rights and our constitutional rights. So when I've had former supervisor elections that straight-up told us in a group, and I know that some in this room or in there, that said, "He would allow illegal aliens to vote." I had major concern with that. And so when we have a supervisor election that has come up to us for a budget increase, we probably need to look at that and say, "All the other counties are operating on three times the budget. Why are we only operating on a lower budget for supervisor elections?" Is it maybe because that he was really trying to heavily push mail-in ballots to cut costs? Possibly, right? When we have a neighboring county that's operating three times more of a budget than Manatee County, we need to wake up. We need to wake up and see what's really going on here, because obviously there were some major issues in the supervisor elections office when Supervisor James Satcher came in and evaluated everything. So I'm going to support you on this, because I know that this budget increase is needed. It's needed to run effective elections here in this county. And I'd hate to be the one to be up here and vote against this, knowing the fact that elections are one of the most important things in today's environment, that we need to really take this as a serious, serious agenda item that we need to increase this budget. Because I know personally that you need this budget. You need this budget increase to effectively run elections in this county the most effective way. So I'm going to support you, James, on this, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Van Austin Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Supervisor, my understanding is that when you took over, obviously, it probably took you a few days or weeks to figure it out, but the office was operating in the red. Is that accurate? You needed $200,000,000 to cover just this year without you making any changes means that it's operating in the red?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was my first question. Second question, if we're going to stick with the budget, I've heard several comparisons to Sarasota. Obviously, they're a sister county. The population is basically identical. I understand why we're always comparing ourselves to one another. What is their annual budget for the SOE's office? Just to give me a more comprehensive understanding. What is their total budget annually, and what is yours annually?
For this, so apples to apples, for this year, it was nine. They came before their board and got a $1 million increase, so theirs is now 10 for this year.
You're at three with an $800,000 increase, puts you closer to four.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, I know you, obviously, we know each other, and you are a great conservative. You're a courageous conservative. And sometimes it does, it takes some courage as a conservative to have to, you know, come forward and say, "I need more money to continue operating and doing what I'm doing," because we don't like to spend money. Some might say we're cheap. We say we're fiscally conservative. But so I know you don't come up here lightly asking for this. I understand why you're after it. One, you know, you got to make up the difference, because you were handed an organization that was operating in the red. I get that. And then I understand why you're asking for the rest, and it centers around election security. What percentage, you want to audit, you might, you want to audit 100% of ballots?
Yes, sir.
Historically, what has our SOE, what percentage of the ballots has our SOE audited?
The statutory minimum is that you take a random race,
Okay.
which, if you get a very small race, it's your random...
Fire commissioner and cedar hammock could be a random race.
And then 1% of the precincts from that race.
Only 1% from that race?
Right. So you could end up with a very small amount. Now, that is a hand audit, audit, sorry.
A hand audit, okay.
Yeah, so, and which, my plan is to still do at least that. So we will, you know, we'll have some redundancy, and I think that's important in each area at the SOE. A lot of the most important functions, I find that there is someone there that is carrying out that objective in the role. But I haven't found that there is any backup in any of the areas. And so that's, you know, I want us to have some functioning teams.
Okay. And this is a goal of mine, and I believe I heard you state it, so I'm hoping that we're on the same page here. You do intend, in a longer-term plan, you do intend to increase the percentage of election day voting?
Absolutely. I want, I, in my conversations with the state, I grew up and were relatively the same era, you know? It was, you voted on election day. If you needed a mail-in ballot, you had to request it. You had to give a valid reason. And, you know, and now we've gone so far in the other direction. I think many of us took for granted that everyone had good intentions as we went in that direction. Oh, just trying to make it easier. But, you know, freedom isn't free, and this country, citizenship is our greatest, you know, asset and thing that we bring to the table. We need to take it seriously. And someone spoke earlier about, you know, voting and who should vote and those types of things. And I'll just say, you know, to this board and to anyone watching, I would go to prison before I allow an illegal to vote knowingly in our elections. And so we're going to take steps to keep those things from happening, or anyone that's not allowed to vote under the laws of the land. And so that's important as well. But absolutely, we need to move to vote-in-person voting. I'm going to call it the VIP experience, vote-in-person experience. And this election, my intent is to press for the early voting and election day. Honestly, I think if everyone showed up, everyone showed up on election day, it would...
Yeah.
It would be exciting.
Yes, sir. And I agree with pretty much all of that, I think. I think I do agree with all of that. One area where I might have a little difference is, I think many people, when it came to pushing, when it comes to pushing mail-in, and let's just call it unsupervised voting, right?
Right.
When it comes to pushing unsupervised voting, I think many people are well-intended, but I, sir, do not believe that everyone is well-intended who is pushing that. I'm going to be honest with you. I don't. I know you're a nice guy and Christian, and you like the benefit of the doubt, but I think we need to be a little more pragmatic on, when it comes to that. So the governor's office took how many weeks, was, how many weeks was the seat vacant before you were appointed? And this is relevant in the end, I believe.
Goodness. Let's see, the old supervisor stepped down February 29th. I was appointed April 12th.
Okay, so over a month, okay.
Yeah, six weeks.
And obviously, during that time, there were two people who applied for the position, yourself and then the number two in command, which is relevant because the governor's office took a month to evaluate the situation. I'm sure looking into the office as well, relying on the Secretary of State, who oversees these things, who's in his cabinet. And after evaluating the office, the governor decided to go in a different direction and decided not to continue with the status quo at the Manatee County Supervisor of Elections Office, and then vetted and chose you. I'm sure you received calls from them and questions and interviews. Is that true?
I did receive calls leading up to the appointment, none that, you know, I definitely did not know which direction things were going to go. But I did receive calls. A lot of their questions were about voter integrity and security. They were asking about mail-ins, and then they were also asking about provisional ballots, surrendered ballots, what type of steps I'd be willing to take to make sure none of those were available to be recounted.
So the governor's not throwing darts at the wall when he's making his appointments?
No, sir. No, and in fact, the person that called me, not the governor himself, but during those interviews, the person that called me was one of the sharpest individuals I've ever had a conversation with. It was obvious from the first 20 seconds of the conversation.
They know what they're doing up there. So the governor, I'm sure, had his office... So, so the governor, I'm sure, had his, his office vetted you and the other individual who was, who was from the office. They made an educated decision after talking to both of you to move the office in a different direction. I understand that, I see that. And since that time, because I know you don't, I understand you don't want to get into taking shots at anybody or speak negatively about, you know, the previous administration. And I, I'm not trying to steer you in that direction either. I guess my question would be though, since you've been appointed, have you had interactions with the governor's folks, meaning his, his, you know, the Secretary of State's office, or even the Secretary of State themselves? Have you had any interactions with any of them since that time? And you don't have to tell me the details of the conversation, I think we get the gist if you have of what they want you to do. But have you had any interactions with them?
Absolutely. The Secretary of State, Cord Byrd, he came to the office, we sat down.
To Manatee County?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Came to our office. We had a conversation behind closed doors and went, went very well. I have a lot of confidence in those guys. But they understand we're the person on the ground, we're their eyes and ears. And, and so I did go over some of the things that we've seen and changes that we'll be making. He seemed very pleased with the direction we're taking. And, and just as an aside, very nice guy, very capable. So it was great to meet him and his team.
Okay, so I'm going to wrap it up and say, fair to say that the, the funding that you're requesting is to implement changes that the Secretary of State and the governor are in line with and they support?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, sir, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention the fact that we do need to take public comment at some point on this item. And that I have provided Form 8B to Commissioner Ballard regarding the voting conflict. So she can complete that, and I understand she's abstaining from the vote today.
That's good, thank you. Commissioner Ballard?
Yes, as our county attorney said, in compliance with Section 112.3143 of Florida statutes, I will be abstaining from voting on this item. My husband works for the Supervisor of Elections Office.
You did a good job.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cruz, back up.
I'm just responding to something, you know, this isn't a question, you don't have to say it, but two things. One, comparing us to someone else's budget is ludicrous. I mean, the, we have, we have thousands of line items in our budget. To say, well, they're higher, so we need to be higher, is that the game we're playing at? Like, how much is the parks budget in Sarasota, Charlie? Should, should we jack ours up just to match Sarasota? Is that fair? That's not how budgets work. Budgets work because you, you put together the most efficient amount of dollars to provide the most benefit to the citizens. And we had an office that created a lot of efficiency and allowed us to save in your, in your words, about $6 million compared to Sarasota, which is great. We have higher turnout or equal turnout in our elections. So clearly, we're turning people out. We have less complaints. So there's, based on the, the report that was provided to the legislature. So if we've saved $6 million through efficiency, great. There's lots of stuff we can do with $6 million in Manatee County. We've got roads that need to be built and sidewalks and everything else under the sun. I'm not just going to come up with $6 million just to match Sarasota. That's not how, that's not how budgets work. And, and as for the mail-in, I, I do now, fortunately, because it was wiped again, I, I do now have a copy of the budget that was wiped. The software line item, regardless of you saying I was incorrect, is $43,600 out of 400 and, out of 841,000. So all this talk that this is all based on security and protection, and we've got to clean things up, and there's cyber, it's, it's object 552005. It's called software. The entirety of it is for, there's 277,000 salary, there's 9,800 and other salaries, since no one else can see this. There's 24,900 contracted services, 11,000 telephone, 40,000 rent, 40,000 equipment repair, 28,000 building repair, which is probably for offices. You know, what, what I do find funny is, this whole conversation was mail-in ballots are the problem. We're spending almost a million dollars to fix mail-in. There's $111,883 just as postage and printing. Like, your budget increase is $111,000 just for postage and printing, which would increase the budget for that, those two line items off of the current year budget by 186%. That, that's the, that, that's a huge increase. In fact, just postage is over $55,000 of additional increase on here. So it doesn't seem like, it, we're spending more on additional postage than we are on additional software, which seems to go against what the narrative was here. Again, I'm not 100% against what you're asking for. I just don't think this has been vetted out. It seems like we're just trying to do something for looking like we're doing something. And this is a, a large budget increase. We should be focusing the same attention on this, asking for the same analytics on this as we do with everyone else. Nobody should be any, any different when they step in front of here. And if we're going to hyperanalyze our department budgets, we're going to hyperanalyze our clerk's budget, then there's no reason not to do that in this particular case, especially in a mid-year discussion with virtually no information.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, point of order. Mr. Chairman, point of order, I call the question.
Want to take public comment? All right. Yes, we had a motion to call the question. Was there a second? Second, the motion was made by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, I got my Commissioner Bearden. Do you take public comment on? Vote on the question. All those in favor of calling the question verbally?
Aye.
Aye?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Vote, call the question is five to, five, passes five to one with Commissioner Ballard abstaining. Five to zero with Commissioner Ballard abstaining, sorry about that. Now we'll have to take public comment on, on the call and the question. Don't you have to take public comment? Yeah. Okay, okay, all right. So we'll do now, now, okay, the question's been called. It's ready for bringing up, a second. Yes. Follow my notes. All right. Did you hit your second? See if that helps? Okay. Okay. So the question, the question, Commissioner Van Austin, but you're still on the board, you still, was that?
The question's been called, sir, so there can be no more discussion or debate.
Take it down then. Take Commissioner Bearden down too. All right, thank you. All right. So now we go into public comment on the matter of the adoption of the budget resolution for supervisor election. If you please come forward, if you have public comments, state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
I have a handout, can I hand this to you all, so you can follow?
Yes, ma'am, you can hand it, cue right there, and, and to the clerk also. Do you have a copy for the clerk?
Oh, I have the set right there.
Okay, yeah, the clerk, if you're going to hand some to us, you got to hand it to the clerk too.
I didn't know we were going to have campaign stump speeches here as well. Excuse my appearance, I'm working outside today and took a quick break to get in here and talk to you all. All right. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Paul Alonis, Manatee County. I've just handed you a document, and the first two items really, Mr. Cruz has really gone through, and, and I agree, and a lot of other citizens agree, just because Sarasota County has a big house doesn't mean that we need a big house too. I think the statistics are clear that we've run great elections. I've been a voter here in Manatee County for 20 years. I have voted in every single election and have always been a, an election day voter until I became a poll watcher and a poll worker. And then I started using early voting. And I've actually done early voting at all the different locations. I've been a poll watcher throughout the county. And through all of these years, I've never seen any issues with any of our voting. I never have met our previous SOE. But actually, I'd kind of like to, because now that I know all of this, I really appreciate how well. I mean, I'm not a fan of mail-in ballots either, but I really appreciate how well he managed that, all of our elections. And I've never needed to go to the Supervisor of Elections Office in the 20 years that I've been here. You can register online and the DMV and everywhere else. So that kind of covers those first couple here. My friend Judy is going to talk about five through nine. But really, the previous SOE and his chief of staff worked here for the past 10 years. And as Mr. Cruz has stated, we haven't had any complaints, we haven't had any issues. They've done a good job. They also reviewed the ClearView system and realized that we do not need that here. We have fully functioning elections. Not enough people do early voting, though. I, when I do early voting, I'm in and out in five, 10 minutes. It takes me longer to park and walk in than it does to vote. So clearly, that is not an issue at all. But what I find interesting is that we have this whole staff that had a tenure of at least 10 years in this office. And we have somebody appointed to the SOE with no election experience whatsoever, including his new chief of staff. And within two days, they miraculously found these immediate urgent needs that we needed to get cleared. It just doesn't make any sense. We have these elections coming up in a few weeks, mail-in ballots. Now is not the time to make these changes. There were also election integrity audits being done after the presidential preference election in March, which the current SOE did not attend. And they were great, they, everything was fine there. But really, I want to get into some of the unresolved conflicts of interest. You know, Kevin stopped by the SOE's office reportedly, you know, discussed this. And obviously, as you can see from their contrived banter, you know, this was a little bit of a setup. Commissioner Ballard has already dropped out, which we appreciate. There are other candidates here that are on the ballot in contested races that would be affected by these improvements. So for these reasons, we asked the B O C C to table the amendment and request that the SOE present these requests as part of their 2025 budget on June 17th, so that the board and the public have adequate time to review a detailed justification for this extraordinary unprecedented and unnecessary budget increase.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Judy Karkoff. I'm a resident of Manatee County. I grew up here, for what it's worth. And I am here today because I am asking the board to table this as, you've had a handout. I'm not going to read every point, there's no time for that. But my family has worked for this county for a lot of years and was the former deputy administrator, David Rothfuss. And my sister worked for this county. And I've just watched how things have really changed over the years. And one of the core values that we have is fiscal restraint and accountability. And this does not do it. This is shoving through 800,000 plus for, you know, something that should be deliberated and looked at much more carefully. And so we can talk about there's no bid going on. We can talk about, you know, the amount of dollars allocated for this is on software. It just, it doesn't make any sense. This is, at this point in time, it's possible that all these, what you're asking for may be needed. But this is not the way to do it in Manatee County. It's just not. And, you know, I have kind of feeling as if this is just stacked, the deck is completely stacked when it comes to this. You know, and so I'm just asking you today to reconsider and put this through a regular budget process. I'm, you know, I'm disappointed that we've gone in this direction. And this is, this is our tax dollars. And yes, election integrity is very important, obviously. We, we know that. But this is not the way to do this. So basically, that's my comments for today, and I hope you table this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other public comment come forward? Yes, sir, please state your name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Ken Piper, Manatee County. The proposed resolution references Section 129.06 of the Florida statutes. Mr. Satcher's letter of May 13th, 2024, requests amendment, or requests transfers from the general fund to the supervisor of elections fund. 129.06-2 lists the circumstances under which this may be done. A, lists appropriations for expenditures within any fund may be increased or decreased. That's not what we have here, it's not within funds, it's between funds. Appropriations from the reserve for contingencies may be made to increase the appropriations for any particular expense in the same fund. Again, this is, these are two different funds. C, the reserve for future construction and improvements may be appropriated by resolution of the board for the purposes for which the reserve was made. This is a, this is a reserve from the general fund, not, not a specific reserve. D, a receipt of a nature from a source not anticipated in the budget and received for a particular purpose. Nobody's saying that there's been additional revenues coming to the supervisor of elections. E, increased receipts for enterprise or proprietary funds. This is not an enterprise or proprietary fund. Now, F says, unless otherwise prohibited, if an amendment is required for a purpose not specifically authorized in items A to E, the amendment may be authorized by resolution or ordinance of the county commissioners adopted following a public hearing at which notice is published in the paper. And in, in the, in the paperwork that I saw online in the agenda, I didn't see any notice of publication. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else up there to come forward and give public comment regarding this matter? Seen none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. The, and the question was called by, we're here at motion. Motion, motion, the motion to adopt is made by Kevin, by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge, and seconded by Commissioner Bearden. Waiting for voting to come up. Is there my vote? Okay. I'm getting to it. Yeah. All the votes have been counted, the motion carries four to one with Commissioner Cruz no, and Commissioner Ballard has abstained. Thank you very much. Three dollars for four bucks. All right, coming up next, 144. I'm going to take a break, we're going to take a break, I saw, I saw that, thank you. What I'd like to do right now, we usually take a 10:30 break, but we're going to take an 11 o'clock break for 10 minutes. If you could be back here at 10 after 11, that would be great. We're at recess. There we are. Thank you, MTV. MTV. I like that better. All right. We were, we had just went through, now we're on item.
Forty-four and forty-five.
Okay, forty-four and forty-five. They just put the motion up. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. County Administrator and County Attorney Sheila McLean, CFO. These two items, forty-four and forty-five, and I'm gonna put them together because they are associated with the agenda that you just approved. Item number forty is the IST. This one is actually brought as a regular because it's tied monetarily to that item number forty. It's the Muckasin Guallo GMP for the emergency medical services at Muckasin Guallo and the GMP for the Lakewood Ranch, 44th Avenue East from I-75 to Lakewood Ranch. So we had to put it in regular because in the event that you wouldn't approve number forty, these items would have to be removed. But they are tightly directly one to another. The other one is bringing the IST increase and the change to the IST list and this, and the monetary dollar amount with the budget amendment. And this one's bringing the GMP action through procurement.
All right. All right, there's a motion. Okay, there's a motion on the board to approve item forty-four by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge. If you cast your votes now.
Ray's not here.
Okay. The, the motion carries five to zero with Commissioner Turner absent.
Do we need citizen comment?
Yes. Okay, move it up for citizen comment. Seeing none, I'll close citizen comment. All right, ma'am. Forty-five?
Same situation. This one is, yes, it's asking for.
All right. Motion's been moved by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. Is there any public comment regarding item forty-five? Seeing none? Could you please cast your votes now? The motion carries five, five to zero with Commissioner Turner absent. And now we're up to natural resources. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Madam CFO. Who's presenting on item forty-six for natural resources?
Right, just let you know you voted no on the EMS station and fly over for forty-four.
Charles, did ever come down?
Yeah, that's why I'm at forty-seven. I have to get about my votes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about forty-six, not forty-seven.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Charlie.
Heard it's coming up.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
And County Administrator, County Attorney. Here to present again our annual request for, for support of our member governments and agencies with the West Coast Inland Navigation District. As you, as you're aware, this board has an appointed delegate, Jason Bearden, sits on the board. And it is a procedure that this board would recommend to the WSCND board, those functions and properties and projects that meet the criteria. And we're here to take any questions you may have.
All right, no questions of staff. I don't see any. There's been a motion to approve by Commissioner Ballard, a second by Commissioner Bearden. Is there any public comment on item, on this, on item forty-six? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Could you please cast your votes now? And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Got your grant funding. Next up is one we've been waiting for. This is item number forty-seven. All right, Mr. Metter, how are you this morning?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Administrator. My name's Charles Metter. I'm the Property Acquisition Division Manager. I'm excited to present this item for you today. It's the execution of contract for sale and purchase with the Angelo's for the Emerson Point expansion. We do have a small presentation, couple of slides. And as you know, back in March, the board authorized the fifteen point five million dollar purchase price and authorized staff to bring a contract back to the board. So here we are with the contract. All right, so there's the clicker. All right, so the Emerson Point expansion, as you can see up here, is part of the 2023 Florida Forever five-year plan for Terraceya. It's about fifty-four acres of pasture with the remaining acres and wetlands. So it's about sixty percent uplands, forty percent wetlands. Half a mile of mangroves on Terraceya Bay, aquatic preserve, and outstanding Florida waterway. And it's also along the Blue Way Trail, which I just learned what the Blue Way Trail was about a month ago. So it's a paddle trail. Yeah, I, I just learned what, I'm not a paddler, so, yeah. Protection supports water quality, fisheries, and many important plants and wild lives. And the acquisition, restoration, and improvement has some partnerships with the Florida Forever potential purchase. Ideally, we'd like the state to come back and buy this land from the county and have a long-term county leased. And there's also some potential grant funding for restoration with the Tampa Bay Estuary Program and the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, or NOAA, I prefer NOAA. Also with the Florida Communities Trust. Right here, we have a concept plan for what the preserve would look like. And as you can see in the northeast corner, that would be reserved for the Angelo's, potential for up to four home sites there in that northeast corner. And there's a little legend in the bottom left for you to see. And so this kind of explains how we got here. It's the Emerson Point Expansion Project Timeline. So back in March, this property was actually listed on the open market for twenty million. And they did reduce the price to sixteen million, but there was no, there was no executed contract. And so in April of 2023, the LMAC recommendation for the conservation acquisition to the board. And then in April of '25, BCC voted to direct staff to proceed with due diligence. And then in March of eight, March 8, 2024, we received an updated appraisal, fourteen million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred. Our contract price before you today is fifteen million, five hundred thousand. And so in March 12th, the latest, the last time we were up here, the board authorized staff to bring a contract back to the board for the fifteen million, fifteen point five purchase price. And then May 28th, that's where we are today, is for the execution of the contract. And there's a lot of people behind me, as well as the family and Mr. Galvano, who probably wants us to talk to it. Thank you.
All right, is that it for the presentation from you? All right, thank you. All right, there's been a motion to approve by Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, a second by Commissioner Cruz. I'll now take public comment. For the record only, sir, can you state your name and county?
Yeah, absolutely. Bill Galvano, Grimes Galvano, Manatee County. I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to the county, Charlie and his team, Charles Metter, and what he's done. The county attorney's office has been outstanding. This is a, a big win for Manatee County. And I know Carrie Baron Angelo is with me. Her heart's very excited about the opportunity to preserve these lands, given her family history and their love for the area. And this is big for Palmetto as well. And so really, we appreciate it. It was a good negotiation. The contract is solid. And I'm looking forward to us being able to close without incident very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment. If you could, please cast your votes now. And the motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. It was a pleasure meeting you. All right, there you go, team. Thank you, team.
Charlie's hanging out for an award again.
Oh, yeah, who wants another one? His wall's falling down from the gas, so many of them. All right. Okay, coming up next, is there any commissioner agenda items that they'd like to bring forward?
No, sir.
Seeing none? Madam Attorney, do you have any comments?
No, Mr. Chair.
County Administrator?
No, sir.
Anything? County Commissioners, do you have any comments or concerns or anything?
I, I do have a comment today.
Commissioner Ballard.
So this is the last meeting where I will have my, my baby with me. And I just want to, to say it's been such a privilege and such a pleasure to have the opportunity to bring him along with me. So he started coming to meetings with me when he was three weeks old, too young to go to any kind of daycare. But I, I really felt that it was important that I was able to be here in person to represent my constituents. And with the leave of this wonderful board, as well as the, the county attorney's office, the county administrator, I was given that amazing flexibility. And I'm, I'm well aware of how unusual it is, and I, I'm just so appreciative of, of that opportunity. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And you got a great civics lesson.
Absolutely.
All right. Sir, Commissioner, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a comment. You, you started off the meeting referencing an officer-involved shooting where a deputy was actually shot. That was in District Three. And the last, like, ten days have been very active in District Three when it comes to our first responders. We, we've had, weekend before last, we had multiple rescues by lifeguards out at the beach, one drowning in Holmes Beach. Guards were the first ones there. It was down the beach. It was not a guarded beach. There's still never been a drowning on a guarded beach in the county. But there's been a lot of activity on the beach, number one. Number two, we've had a couple of really difficult traffic accidents with fatalities and airlifts. And then lastly, we had an officer-involved shooting in the district. And I just wanted to say on behalf of all the residents of District Three, thank you to all the first responders, tell you how much we appreciate everything that you do. And we know that even, you know, what might seem like, you know, bougie West Bradenton or the island, we know that you're, you're putting your life on the line every single day when you leave your house, and we appreciate everything you do for us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, we have great EMS. We have great law enforcement in Manatee County, and we appreciate what they do every single day. Or yes, we have great EMS, we have great law enforcement in Manatee County, and we appreciate what they do every single day, running into a building and not running away. So thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate it. If there's not, if there's no other comments, we'll be adjourned for the day. Thank you.